All right, we'll call the August 5th Planning Commission meeting to order. Samper the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kimberly, we're ready to call the roll.
Allen.
Here.
Bib.
Here.
Boyd.
Here.
There she is. Greg.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Richard. Richard.
Here.
Tackett.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Townsend.
Yes.
Nine present, we have a form.
Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the minutes from July the first meeting?
Second motion.
Got a motion from Bib, was that?
Second.
Second from Townsend.
Townsend. Was second. Oliver say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes will stand approved. Under new business tonight, item 2.1 is to discuss and possibly take action rezoning request on Hillcrest Drive, map 91 CE, parcel 3701, rezoning from CS to R10. Is there a motion on this item for approval?
To discuss.
Okay, got a motion by Paul, and where was the second?
I was gonna say it's a motion to discuss and possibly take action.
Yeah, I'll read that.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question regarding that process? I know we changed it last month, but totally throws my brain completely off of kilter. Why the change? Why would it be that you would make a motion to possibly take action? And then you don't have another motion to actually approve?
So I don't know what happened last month.
Well, no, we're trying to follow the same Board of Mayor Alman form.
Man, it's so far away from what I've learned as Robert's rules on the front end. You have an issue that you bring before, it's looked at, and if it deems possibility of passage, then you make a motion to approve, and if you don't get a second, then it dies. If you get a second, then you take a motion, a vote, and then it gets a positive vote. Now, we don't take a, we take a motion on the front end to possibly look at it.
It should be a motion to put it on the floor. I think, I'm not a Robert's rules expert, so no. So we'll have to get some clarification because I might have one Robert's rules in me, but my opinion is you have to have a motion, put it on the floor, or, yeah, I might have one Robert's rules.
Clay's not here.
But if you put it on the floor, that doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna get a motion to approve it.
Correct. So you may, in order to discuss Robert's rules, I believe says you gotta have a motion to put it on the floor, because the board, the commission may not want to discuss it. So if something's on the agenda that you're able to talk about, there's no motion to put it on the floor to discuss, and a second, it has to get second, because any, I don't know how your agenda preparation works, any commission member can make a motion to put something on the floor, but it has to get a second, it can be eligible for discussion. That's just a discussion aspect of it. And then, a motion to approve, the chairman asks for a motion to approve, and if they don't get a motion to approve, then you just discuss it, you move on.
Okay, so there is a motion to approve after the discussion?
There is.
Okay.
There has to be, there has to be a motion, a second, to get it on the floor for discussion. And then, a motion with some sort of vote, if the commission decides.
And there's gotta be a second for that motion as well?
There does.
Okay. Which is the way we were doing it in the beginning.
That's what we're doing, though, isn't it?
I apologize.
That's what we're doing.
Well, I just, I envision a more streamlined process at the Board of Mayor Alman, but I must be trying to keep tally.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
And thank you for asking. We wanna keep our meetings running properly, not just as well as short and sweet and smooth.
But we can discuss all day, but then they may not ever get a motion to approve.
You're right.
Correct.
But one of the meetings that we talked about, instead of a motion to approve, you said we just could say call for the question and?
Yes, so we're gonna, now, our board does call for a question from time to time, is that a form of motion to vote?
No. So, call for the question for being if there's a motion to approve, so you got a motion, you have to put it on the floor to discuss, a motion to discuss, so the chairman say we're at item 1, 2, and whatever, other kind of motion to discuss, someone makes that motion. If the chair doesn't get a second, then that motion can be discussed. If it gets a second, then you can discuss the item. And after some discussion, if a commission member says, okay, I moved it, we approved this item. If that gets a second, then the chairman asks if there are any questions or further discussions, because now we have a motion to approve. So now you see what direction the body is going. Does anybody have any final questions? And maybe that ends up in, although you want an hour to speak, and so if y'all got tired of debate, then somebody may call for a question. Like, okay, somebody's just written a phone book, filibustering or whatever, then somebody can call for a question, and the chairman.
Call for the vote.
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that closed, Bob?
It's fairly close. Most of the time, you call for the question, then there is an opportunity for somebody to object, and if somebody objects, then you have to vote on the call of the question.
That's right.
Which gets to be rather lengthy, in this case. Somebody calls for the call for the question, that usually stops all debate, and then it goes into a motion on the floor, that's already on the floor.
The Board of Mayor Alman has encountered that, with objections, called for a question. Would even the Robert's rules be?
So, and thank you for being here and helping out, and thank you for helping us clarify it, because we do wanna run our meetings properly.
Exactly.
Okay, as far as this meeting, do we wanna stick with what we got, or we wanna go back?
Yes, we need to do it by, so this is gonna be a motion to discuss, and then, after the discussion, you will ask for a motion.
To approve.
To approve.
Okay.
And then there will be a second in both cases.
All motions have to be in a positive, don't they?
Yes. I did get that right, correct, Ron? Okay, yes.
If that can't be positive, don't. That's right.
So we do have a motion to discuss?
Okay, let's go with that.
2.1.
So we are ready to?
Okay.
Did we, do we need to vote on that motion to discuss?
Did we vote to discuss?
I don't think we did.
You don't vote on that.
We don't have to vote on that.
Don't vote on that. All in favor of putting this on the floor for discussion?
Aye. You don't have to, we don't have to do that. We just get a motion and second, and then discuss, and then we get a motion and second and vote, okay? All right, so, now that I thoroughly have that in my brain, I'll see if I can get it the second time. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, we're ready for you.
This property on Hillcrest Drive, fronts, a portion of West Hillcrest Drive, owned by Royce and Roger Holman, and Mr. Cope is here as their authorized agent. This, and this happens, and we do not know sometimes how this happens, it could be zoned before we had parcel maps delineating the parcel, or one time there could have been two parcels there and it became combined. But 7,000 square feet of this parcel that abuts West Hillcrest is zoned CS. This back portion is zoned R10. Their request is to rezone the whole thing, change this from CS to R10, so that they can build a house in this area on that lot. CS does not allow single-family residential construction. And so that is their request, to rezone that 7,000 square feet from CS to R10.
And they're planning on building a house?
Well, whoever purchases it.
Oh, I gotcha.
The person that?
Is there enough frontage there on Hillcrest?
There is enough frontage, yes, sir. They just have a very large side yard to the north.
Okay, any questions?
I'm not against that, but the way it looks there now, it almost looks like that's kinda getting into spot zoning.
Well, actually, it's not, because this whole area behind it is R10. So we're just changing the R10 boundary down to here and removing this CS. So because it's a contiguous zoning, it's just moving, it's not really to be considered spot zoning. If we were rezoning a parcel, like up here, this parcel from R10 to CS, that argument could be made.
Okay. It's gravel drive, am I seeing that the gravel drive that's behind the paved parking lot, that's on that lot?
Yes, that gravel driveway that people use presently to, at this parcel, is on the Holmans' property, and it is my understanding that that will no longer take place after, after the construction starts, they'll put a fence up or something.
All right, any other questions?
Well, I give you a motion to approve.
Motion to approve of Craig.
A second.
I heard two. Townsend?
Second by Townsend.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Allen.
Yes.
Bib.
Yes.
Boyd.
Yes.
Greg.
Greg.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Tackett.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Pass is nine.
Nine oh.
Okay, item 2.2, is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved, Chair. Second.
Was that Tackett on?
The bottom of the motion, who had the second?
Miss Boyd. Okay, if we don't have to vote, we're ready.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have amended in your packet the ordinance from last month, where we rezoned this parcel and this parcel from CG to MRO. Since the last Planning Commission meeting, Ms. May, what's her last, May? Ms. May, Ms. May, has come in and requested to be, her property to be rezoned from CG to MRO for the same reasons. And the reasons that they're requesting these rezonings is that the CG does not allow for single-family residential homes, and if their homes are destroyed by nature, or in the event of a fire, they would not be allowed to rebuild their homes. And so, also, they're starting to, some of their insurance carriers are starting to deny them insurance because of their zoning classification. So, the MRO zoning classification does allow a single-family dwelling to be built in that zoning classification, and that will allow them to achieve their goal.
Is that the tract that there's a house for sale there now?
I do not know if there, I don't know what's for sale. I can tell you that Hall Lane is a private road, there is an easement on this property, or I won't say an easement, but part of the property does go out to the right way on Highway 41. But Hall Lane is right here, and it is, provides access to all these parcels through here.
Okay, any other questions?
Is that the only reason that they are wanting to rezone it, just for like insurance purposes, or is that all the plans for?
I know that the Osals and the two gentlemen that own this property, it is their primary residences, and they plan on staying there. They did not know that it was uncommercial when they bought them, but it's been zon commercial since, I wanna say, 99, when the city of Springfield annexed it. So, when you look at the county tax records, it says residential, and that's what a lot of realtors look at, but, you know, our zoning has had it commercial general since it was annexed. So, it is a commercial zoning, and in the event their house was destroyed by tornado, they wouldn't be able to get a building permit back from us, because it's not allowed.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The rifle end of that block goes up by the church.
Yes.
Could we encourage the landowners to possibly work something out with the church? I mean, that's wasteland, right? It's not wide enough to do anything with whatsoever.
Well, I don't know exactly how wide it is, you know, when it was, when it was cut out, it was cut out for accounting requirements. It's been like that before we acquired it. I don't know how wide it is, it may be wide enough for a single-lane driveway. I think that would probably have been the intent.
But it's not needed, because you got whole road right there.
Assuming that they actually have an easement associated with that ingress and egress. I know that all of these parcels, these three parcels right here, have that agreement. This one, this one owns it, but these three have a easement for ingress and egress across here, as well as that one right there.
But it's Hall Lane, the city street?
No, it is a private road. Yeah, it's very, it's like a goat path, actually.
All right, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Richard.
Second by Richard.
Yes.
Bib.
Yes.
Boyd.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Tackett.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Pass is nine, zero.
All right, our next item on the agenda is 2.3, and that's a discussion on amending the landscape ordinance. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Motion by Paul.
Second.
Second by Tackett. All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City staff is recommending that we amend the design and landscaping buffers within 813 of our zoning ordinance, section C, and then everything within that. The reason being is, is that there are not provisions within our, but, within our ordinance to address certain issues that we have, we have found. If you will look at C, 1, B, and then you can see that we have amended, added a few phrases and added a new section C. Our ordinances, this ordinance's intent is to encourage developers to save trees, and very specifically to save heritage trees, which are defined as a tree 24 inches in caliper or larger. You know, save the tree if you can. Larger trees, sequester carbon, much better than younger and smaller trees, they're a benefit to our environment and to our climate, so. And also, they provide a very nice aesthetic value to the city of Springfield. And, you know, our goal is to make Springfield a more attractive place, and the more attractive we make Springfield, the more attractive it becomes to future development. So, one begets the other. So, we are making it clear that we are encouraging preservation of heritage trees. We've also, the existing ordinance does not have any sort of goal, other than we won't add a minimum in a commercial development, three canopy trees, three understory trees per acre. And then we have a landscaping requirement for buffers that they have to make, and, you know, through that process, you'll get more than that, but that's the minimum. So, two-inch trees, it would be, you know, 12, 12 caliper inches. That's our minimum requirement per acre. Now, we do have a goal, it's not a requirement, that's what we're putting in, we're putting in a goal of 40 caliber inches per acre. All right? So, all trees 18 inches or greater, but less than 24 inches will be replaced at a 50% caliber inch ratio. So, an 18-inch tree would be replaced at nine inches of equivalent trees, you know, if it's three, three-inch trees, or four, two-inch trees. We'll go, you know, that way. We're not looking, it does, it's not clear in our ordinance now, it could be interpreted to say, you will replace that 18-inch tree with a nine-inch tree. And those are hard to come by, especially as you get bigger, it's hard to come, find a 12-inch tree, and more importantly, they're outrageously expensive, and the probability of keeping a tree that size alive is pretty difficult. So, it's easier to start with smaller caliber trees. So, the, so we're gonna replace trees based on caliber inches, whatever size they choose, between two and three inches, that's the number of trees. Okay, in the design installation, that's where we were at. This is a change, because once again, we are encouraging, you know, not taking down heritage trees, anything over 20, 24 inches or over will be replaced at a one caliber inch to one caliber inch. So if you take out a 24-inch tree, you will replace it at a minimum with 12 two-inch caliber trees, or four three-inch caliber. So, we are encouraging our developers to save the larger trees if they can. All right, so we are doing that. If required landscaping and total caliber inch replacement of removed trees cannot be reasonably placed on the proposed site, we have made a provision for them to do an in-lieu payment, so that we can get trees for the city and plant trees throughout the city. Okay, so, what that means is, right now, if a developer can't, you know, there's a certain requirement, let me show you what I'm talking about. This is an existing site plan that we're reviewing. On that site, there were 29 trees that were bigger than 18 inches. One of them is actually a 48-inch reta. So, that's a total of 612 canopy, 36 caliber inches of understory, which will be replaced at 50% caliber inches, so they have to replace 324 caliber inches. Divide that by two, it's a pretty large number, on 2.3 acres. It's almost impossible to put that many trees on the site, the building, parking, and storm drainage. But that's what we require right now, there's no cap. And what this, and what we're talking about, we're about caps, there is a cap right now proposed, that is 150% of our 40 caliber inch goal, which would be 60 caliber inches. We cap it at that. Where that becomes important is like that RA Benton site, where it's heavily wooded, maybe not been timbered in a while. You know, if there's, you know, that many trees per acre, that large, they'll never be able to replace those trees, and replacements are in addition to required landscaping. So, it, you know, our ordinance intent was good, but we just didn't have the proper mechanisms in there to be fair to the developers. So, that's how it would be calculated, and that's actually how it was calculated when we did the landscaping review. So, the proposed, same thing, we have 15 trees, that would be a 15% replacement, all of these 18 inches right here, and now when we got to these 24 and ups, those, see, so that's what their total is, this is 50%, but the rest of them are one to one, 378 caliber inches, for a total of 495, just on the canopy, another 18-inch here, that's 50% replacement for 513 caliber inches replacement. Now, that's how we would calculate it. But, our amendment has a cap of 60 caliber inches per acre. Okay? So, 60 times 2.3 is 138 caliber inches. That's all they would have to put back onto that site in replacement. Okay? There are?
Question, David. I know what a caliper is.
Yes, sir.
So I'm assuming a caliper is gonna be a diameter?
It's gonna be, yes, the diameter, not the circumference.
Then why do we call it diameter?
We don't. That's what arborists and foresters call.
Well, go to your previous slide. Reason why I was confused, because?
I have caliber there, I copied the wrong thing.
Okay.
It's caliper, with a P.
Caliper, which is a caliper.
And thank you for finding my error.
Well, my, and then, my only other thought would be, if you're looking at size only, rather than the type of tree that's gonna be planted, because different varieties of trees grow at different rates.
That is correct.
So if you're gonna plant an oak, it's gonna grow, or hickory, if you're tearing down a hickory, it's gonna grow much slower than a maple.
That's correct. And we do not require them to replace the species. There is a listing in the back there of all of our approved canopy trees, and all of our approved understory trees, they can replace the canopies with any canopy.
And the reason I say that is because we all, if you bought a tree lately, you know how expensive they are. And rather than require a certain size tree to be planted, why not look at the possibility of giving the option, or planting a tree with the capability of growing to that size in a certain timeframe?
Yes, sir, and that's why these particular species were selected, the, in the original ordinance was worked out with a landscape architect. We're not telling them what size trees. When you put a new tree in, you want it to be at least two inches. You don't want it to be much more than three, at least according to landscape architects and arborists. So, we're not telling you, all we're saying is, is the minimum tree size that you have to replace with is a two-inch, you can do a three.
But you're gonna have to put a bunch of them if you take down a 48-inch tree.
But you get capped, that's where I'm going here, you get capped. You get capped at 60 total caliber inches per acre. So, there, that is opposed to 324, that's the cap on the same side. Now, with 324, there's no provision for what if I can't get that number of trees? We've got that built in, too. So, you know, this is just a breakdown, comparing this example to existing and proposed, you know, we're talking about 126 trees, if we were using two-inch calibers. Where on the proposed, with the replacement cap, it's 69 trees. You know, a difference of 93 trees or 186 caliber inches, okay? So, there's no provision for, if you can't replace them, what to do in the existing. But there is a provision, if all required replacement trees cannot be placed on the site. And so, that replacement, where we discuss that, is that in 2D, where we, there's a payment made, the in-lieu of payment, which is $150 per caliber inch. So, in this case, the landscape architect can't get 138 caliber inches of replacement trees on the site and the required landscaping. trees on the site and the required landscaping. What can they do? They can get 100, but they can't get the 138. So, they can get 53 trees, but they can't get the other 12. So, in this case, they can take that 38 inches, multiply it by 150, it's $5,700, which will be deposited into the city's landscape maintenance and tree fund.
And where's the 150 come from?
It's a number that is, the same number as Goodlessville, Hendersonville, Louisville, Kentucky.
I mean, that could be a moving target over time.
Well, it's not. It won't be a moving target. I mean, it's in the ordinance. It'll be 150. If you can't replace your cap...
Well, my only concern would be, as long as it's equitable and fair.
Mm-hmm.
If it's fair, and then, I mean, I don't know anybody that's going to fuss about having trees planted in your community.
And that's where we're trying to go, because...
As long as it's equitable and fair to those that are having to foot the bill, and, you know, it'd be a hard pill to swallow to write a $5,700 check to the city. If he could turn it around and donate two-inch trees, and tell you guys, here it is, you've got to go plant them.
Right. Same principle. What we would do with those, with that $5,700, it will go specifically to a tree fund, where we will plant trees on city property, or we could do things like, we could buy Loblawley Pine Sprigs, and we could go to the middle school, and we could give a Loblawley Pine Sprig to everybody, every student that wants one, and I can take you to the Loblawley Pine behind 109 Macintosh, that is now 32 feet in air, that my daughter planted when we first moved here, that she did get from the 4H. So, it, you know, we can, it, it's an opportunity for every person in the city to get a tree and improve the aesthetic value of it.
Do you want to do it on Arbor Day, right?
Well, they can do, we may do that. We also have the availability to get black willow slips, and put those into our string banks, and stabilize our string banks, which is very important, so that they don't meander as nearly as much as they do. When I, we have a big meander problem, but we do have a big erosion problem. And all of our streams in Springfield, as a matter of fact, are what are called unattainable parameter streams, mostly due to siltation. So, if we can stabilize the string banks as well, and we can use that to help improve our standing in our stormwater management.
That's all I had. When you're doing your calculations, to start with, I assume that's only healthy trees?
That, what the...
Like, you've got a 24-inch tree that's dead.
Right!
They don't, they don't calculate that?
Yeah, I certainly hope they don't do it, but they have to do a tree survey of six inch and up. They only have to, they can take out anything 18 inches and below, or below 18 inches and not have to replace it. If it's 18 and up, they replace. You know, we had a discussion about that 48-inch with the person, the owner, that's going to develop that site. You know, I don't know if it's a good tree. All I'm looking at is, a piece of paper says it's a 48-inch redup. Now, if it's not a good tree, have your landscape architect tell me it's not a good tree, and we won't count that tree against you. Or have an arborist come in and say, that tree is not worth saving, because as trees get older, they do, they do become bad. Some of them last a pretty darn good long time, though. So, you know, the bigger trees, like I said, they have more leaves, they have more surface area, they sequester carbon at a much higher ratio than a smaller tree does. That's where their benefit is. They're not very beneficial for biomass production or wildlife, you know, but that's the plus for that. Maybe you won't have as many squirrels on your site. But, you know, the younger trees do produce biomass at a higher rate. Once again, they're more aesthetically pleasing. You know, it, it's much nicer to have a 150, 200-year-old oak tree on your property than knowing that there used to be one there, and now, you know. That's our objective, is to make it more attractive. We're not prohibiting it, we're encouraging it, we're even capping, you know, so it doesn't get out of hand, but it could, as it's written, so we cap it at 60 inches, caliber inches per acre, and, you know, and then if you, for whatever reason you can't, with your required landscaping, get those replacements back in, whatever you get in, then we can, you know, you can do an in-lue payment for the rest, to benefit the city as a whole.
I understand some of this, and I agree with some of it, but there's some of it that I think is going to make a hardship on a person that's trying to start up a new business, and he's struggling to be able to do something, and then you start throwing things like this at him, that could be the difference of not being able to go into business or not.
Yes, sir. I understand. But the other side of that is, if they do a tree survey early, and he, and his design professional is taking into account where his trees are, and they do a design based on a lower impact, the cost may not be that much more, or may not be anymore. Because if they don't, you know, they're going to have to meet a landscaping minimum anyway. This is, we're just talking about where we found the errors, or the issues, not errors, but issues, were in the replacement, the calculations, and how much there was. I mean, going back to that site that we looked at, 2.3 acres, if that site had just been a grass site, there wouldn't have been any replacement at all. But it turned out to have 29 trees, 18 inches and larger. And, you know, arborists will tell you, there is, you know, 324 or 648 actual inches, that's a lot of value, from an aesthetic standpoint, from what those trees have been doing for the city of Springfield for all these years, and then we're going to cut them down, we're going, you know, the goal is to replace them evenly, but there's no way you're going to be able to put three, and that's at 50%. There's no way you're going to be able to put 162 trees and build that building, and the required parking, and the required storm drainage, and the required landscaping. It's just not going to happen. But our ordinance is written, makes no provision. It says, this is what you'll do. And we're trying to adjust it so that the replacement, once again, the replacement requirement is capped. So, it really becomes beneficial to these bigger parcels that we're talking about, 20 acres or more. It's beneficial to this one for sure, because they had all of those larger caliber trees on it. Now, not every site will have those. Some of them, you know, they got out there, and they were timbered, and cleaned up, and they've kept them mowed, so, you know, there's, no trees have been growing. Those sites, all we're going to ask of them is to do, meet the landscaping requirement, the, you know, the minimum landscaping requirement of buffers and the other required landscaping. But we're just talking about replacement. So, as it, as we're at right now, our ordinance is by far more punitive than what we're suggesting. We're trying to make it more, substantially more fair to our developers.
Mr. Chairman, I had something to add. We're there now, so we're, so we bring this to you to try to be order friendly, and I don't mind saying, I believe the numbers that David is using, the example he uses, shine, is that right? Okay, so shine, PDA, pediatric therapy, excuse me, most of the deals in development in South End of Springfield. And under this current ordinance, they have outcame, because it's too punitive, that's a good word, for the trees that need to be removed from that lot to try to build. So, we're trying, we, David looked around, and a couple more public worst directors looked around to see, how can other cities get around this? But another issue that we're probably going to encounter is the RA Benton Lane that you all, that's already done.
Right.
Yeah, the RA Benton Lane block that you all approved, that, that lot has pretty significantly large trees on it. And so, the current ordinance might end up rendering that property undeveloped. I mean, they can't do that development, because there's no alternative. You either got, you've got to do the replacement, and it's calculated at this rate, or you don't, there's no other alternative, there's no, there's nothing there. So, what I would ask the commission, and certainly we're open as a staff, whatever you all want to do, if you have other ideas, or want to make amendments, I would just ask that if you don't vote it down tonight, that we make an amendment to maybe, if you want it, and if you like what's proposed, fine, but if you don't, I want to make an amendment, or something that the commission could agree on to move forward, so we can get this process, because we're, we have some developments that are semi-held enough right now with, with our current ordinance, because Erin Cobb, most of her name I can share, it's his daughter that owns Shine PDA, and she's looking at major expansion, which would be a tremendous benefit to Springfield and children who need help in Springfield. And that's been, those are the numbers that he's using right there, 162 trees, or whatever that was, is just, for that lot, is unfathomable, and almost renders that property undeveloped with what she needs to do with the amount of parking that she needs. So, we just need some help. We bring this to you saying, we need to make a change, so we hope you will consider making changes to that.
And one thing I might add is, you know, a heritage tree, in a lot of cases, if anybody's ever had a farm with trees on it and all that, these things need to be cut before they get bad. And that, right now, with lumber being what it is, you know, they're still worth something.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as the arborists are involved in the whole process, with the developer on the front end, to make sure that, where the city's not going to require something to have to replace on something that is really, has already seen its useful life.
Right.
That's the, I think that's the key, is because a tree has reached its end point, or, you know, a lot of times, you can find a tree that's been struck by lightning, and then only an arborist is going to find out and see that, as opposed to ordinary folks like us.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that tree's going to die.
And...
It's on its way out. So, those type things shouldn't fall into the calculation of the replacement, because they need to come out anyway.
That's exactly right. And that's why we saw them hollow out over town, we know, we installed, we blew them out, and arborists would say, it is true, it's not worth saving. And we will take, take that word. I just want to tell you, the angle we're coming from on this is to try and help to develop, and be more developed, because current, our current ordinance is not, it gives us no wiggle room, not, well, wiggle room, but when there are things like that, like you're talking about, don't save a tree that shouldn't be saved. If it might blow down on the building in the next winter, well, that tree shouldn't be saved either. So, stuff like that, that give more, more room to allow development, but also save trees.
You're also, you know, that, you know, we mentioned the 48. We, we told them this, Cobb, you know, we don't know, we haven't had the opportunity to get out on the site. It may not be worth saving. Have a landscape architect, architect tell us it's not worth saving, and it won't even be in the calculation. But if, but on the other hand, if it's a good, if it's a great tree to save, then it needs to be. So, yes, we concur. We're going, you know, I think the intent of the ordinance has always been replacement of healthy trees. We're not going to make you replace an end-of-life tree. That would just, it wouldn't make no sense whatsoever, and it would be just a bridge too far, in my opinion. So, we, we always try to work with the developers and be reasonable, because, you know, developers, future developers, they have options other than the city of Springfield to invest their money and bring their business. And we want to be as business-friendly as we can, we want to encourage the investment in our communities as much as possible. And I think this will help us do that, but I want, you know, we're not trying to be punitive in any way, and we're trying to be helpful, because we want Springfield to grow. I, you know, I think it's a great place, and I won't want it to grow, and I want it to be an attractive place.
Does this only pertain to developing properties? What if a person, their home, you go out and you've got a heritage tree there, and it needs to come down? You cut that tree down?
Yes, sir.
Does the city come back and say, well, you need to replace that tree with...
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. It does not apply to pre-existing commercial lots, or pre-existing, you know, only if it's a new development.
Undeveloped.
Undeveloped land, new development. So, subdivisions, new subdivisions, there's a requirement for at least one canopy tree or one understory tree per lot.
Mr. Chairman, I, based on the comments, and now that we have fully, I think, I understand it a lot better than I did when I read it, then I would move that we approve. Okay. Motion for approval.
I'll second.
Sir, second?
Mr. Tackett, I think.
Tackett.
You what?
Mr. Tackett.
All right.
Alan?
Yes.
Bib?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
All right, under 3.0, other and old business, VZA.
Yes, Kimberly, would you like to go over that one?
I will. They are requesting a two-foot from the 15, they're building a two-story building, sorry, two-story home on North Maple Street, and they just need two feet, so they'll make it 13 feet on the sides. It's a small, non-conforming, pre-existing lot of record. Basically, they're just hoping on two feet on each side.
And the classification is R-10.
It's R-10, correct.
So, it's like a 5,200 square foot lot in an R-10 classification, so to build anything, we've seen a lot of requests for variances on these smaller lots of record. Just wanted to make you aware of that. Immediately after this, Mr. Sacks is going to give us a 30-minute training discussion on our electric distribution, and I wanted to remind you that tomorrow night is First Friday, and please come out if you can, and if you can't. I hope you enjoy staying at home.
All right. Is there any other business that we need to look at before our training session? No food in the training session tonight, right?
No, it's just 30 minutes. Hopefully, it'll be very, it's, not, not tonight, not for, I only feed them when it's an hour.
I'll have to get away, my son's...
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Do you dismiss?
We are.
Dismiss, dismiss, and then Steve will do training after the meeting.
Is there a motion to dismiss?
So moved.
This boy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're ready.